Okay.
Are we good?
Yep, we're going.
All right, we are.
It's counting.
Huh?
It's counting.
It's counting, okay. So make a motion to come back into regular session at eight thirty-eight.
I'll make a motion.
And can I have a second?
I'll second.
So Beau made the motion, we're second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved.
Do we need to say anything about having to take a recess to charge the court?
I think you just did.
Okay.
You just did, covered it. Alright, so in regards work on employee evaluation form. So, the department has to do one on their employee on their subordinate. So like John would do one on all DPW employees, the officer charged would do one on all the other deputies or officers.
Right.
Would it Rose do one on the deputy? No?
She's my daughter.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would have to...
Someone else would need to do it.
Okay. So, I would do one for John. Officer in charge, so right now that's Jim. So, oh I see. At this present time since he's temporary.
Rose.
Rose. So clerk. Deputy clerk.
DPW, please.
What I need... If I do one on you, then I need to do one on Jean. Would you say, would you say or no?
I don't know if you're gonna be doing it to public officers because you don't have the power to remove them or fire them.
Right.
Presumably the evaluation then is not an evaluation so much as a friendly annual discussion.
Ah, um, so then that would be, alright, attorney?
Do you have the power to remove the attorney, yeah?
CEO?
Co-entrance.
A public officer that is also an employee, so subject to termination or due to win, I believe. Or, well, not even a win, but...
Alright, so CEO. Alright, so that covers all of the positions, right? No? So... I guess I just need to work on creating an evaluation form, huh? And you said it would just, it could just be myself to do it, and then I could present it, give it to the board?
If you wanted to, for it to be part of the records, sure.
Okay.
And it's something you probably want in the employee's files.
Yeah.
That's something you'd like. And for the annual evaluations that supervisors are doing, you should advise them that it should be writing in, in the employee files, and they probably wanna tell you what their evaluations were.
Okay, so then...
So when you meet with the chiefs to do theirs, you can either have already looked over their evaluations at that point, or get them from them at that point.
Would we do it at the beginning or end of the fiscal year?
Probably the end because you've been making the determination whether or not, because you won't have done the negotiations yet for the new collective bargaining agreement, and the decision won't necessarily have been made for the new year for raises yet.
Okay. So then, before, what do you think would be a good date, like in...
The budgeting would be done in January and February. Where raises would be taken into consideration.
Okay.
For the budget.
Okay.
Then in April is when that motion, the appointed, you know, the organizational meeting where the raises are actually verbalized. The next collective bargaining, the current one goes until the end of May, until the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Go until May two sixteen?
Yes.
Yeah, so anyone has to be paraded on.
So my guess is we need to do that.
So then when you say then it would be...
January, February.
When do we start the, I'm sorry, again, when do we start the budget proceeding?
Budget, we usually start the end of January.
So would you, I mean, would December be sufficient for it?
You can do it at the same time you start doing the budget, just keep in mind there's gonna be a lot of input at that time. At least I imagine it already, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, Rose doesn't have to do this part.
I do not, I am not the budget officer for the...
That's the mayor, or if the mayor chooses to appoint one, the mayor's appointee.
You and Jean usually work out. But board input, review.
I would, I guess I'd say by before December, I mean, I can start it in November and get it done before the holidays start coming, before Thanksgiving comes around, before it gets, 'cause then after that, you might as well just kiss goodbye because of shopping and work and everything with the holidays, family events and all that, forget it.
I got one question.
Yeah?
In order to do these evaluation forms on DPW, laborers, workers, whatever, are you gonna have to contact the union, get it through the, before you can go?
The mayor wouldn't be doing any of the ones that are in the bargaining unit, he'd only be doing the DPW chief. DPW chief just has a regular review of the employees, so it's not a disciplinary proceeding.
I understand that, but...
If we're going to be a disciplinary proceeding, yeah, the union would have to be contacted because they could send a representative to ask questions, or if there's gonna be any questioning of the employee, they have that right.
So if it's just for an annual review of just their performance and everything?
Yeah, if it's a disciplinary hearing, or if there's something that looks like discipline going on in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Between DPW superintendent and employee, then union has to be advised in advance.
So with it not being disciplinary hearing, it's just a review of what you've done, what, you know, all that, then that should be fine, right?
I don't know, does I have to be...
I mean, you can always check with, with the representative to see if they want to send some mail.
Yeah, I'll check with the new guy, spoke with him.
Jeffrey.
I see, yeah, I spoke with him last week, and I got a meeting with him tomorrow. Fourth track. And with the DPW in regards to their, in regards to the bargaining agreement, go over all of that. So... And then I'll report back to that on the regular meeting. So I'll check with him on that, with John. So, I'm not gonna set a date or anything that it's due yet for evaluation forms, I'm just gonna add that on to the regular meeting, maybe you can remind me that I need to get that done, please.
The evaluation form will go into old business for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that works. Water infrastructure grant conference call, already discussed that, that was along with the water project. And last but not least is meeting videos. So, in regards to what happened with, in regards to the meeting videos, I contacted, what's his name, Robert Freeman, from the Committee on Open Government, in regards to the meeting videos. In regards to a substantial amount of them, and, let me bring that up. Sorry, should I have that up already? Get it below?
I did read it there. Part of it, I understand, is, when I spoke to him, he did say you can choose to edit whatever you post yourself to YouTube. But because they are public property, you have to keep the unedited one, and if somebody was to foil them, they would get it in its entirety. I don't think that you probably expressed to him, there was no, there was nothing said that violated an employee's confidentiality. And us, us on the board have none.
What, have none, what?
We don't have confidentiality, we can't go through executive session to discuss anything that pertains to us.
Correct, but when it was containing, pretty much it was ear mongering in regards about an employee.
No, it wasn't.
That should be kept confidential.
It was my allegations against you, Mr. Mayor, if there was any against Mr. Patterson, it was, it would've been in his capacity as a board member, but again, it really didn't pertain to him whatsoever.
Well, it was more towards you.
It was more to the...
Well, in regards to, to him, he's an employee now, which that's...
But it wasn't...
But what I'm saying is, is the allegations...
Right, and now the information now, though, that pertains to him is confidential, he is an employee of the village, that cannot be discussed out of executive session.
Well, when I talked to him and I explained in detail what I was talking about, he said, "No, that's, those are implications against the office of the mayor."
Well, in regards to what was discussed was, yeah, it was implications towards me, but also in regards towards that employee that is now an employee.
No.
So in regards to, when I spoke with him, I don't understand why the heck this isn't coming out.
Actually, I had a long conversation with him, and that's what I told him, I said, "You know, this guy's an employee now, he was previously a board member, but again, there was no allegations against him, it was against you." So I only understand how, one, we don't put those in the minutes, which, we're on the minutes, by the way.
Doing the regular meetings, correct?
Yeah, it's been two weeks, we don't have any minutes on, on the website.
Didn't you send a email about...
I sent the email out.
We sent it, but then there was the whole hiatus of what was gonna go in it, and then it never happened, it's not on the website yet. The agenda's up, but not the minutes.
I thought the meetings were, the minutes were already sent.
I did send them out, I thought I sent them to Sarah when I sent them to Abby, I usually...
You did, but maybe she held off because of...
I didn't talk to her about any problems.
Maybe she was in the courtesy copy waiting, waiting to see what we were doing.
Yeah, maybe when we did reply, replied all, and she got included in the emails back, saying that we need to add the other stuff into the month.
So in regards to, I spoke with Mr. Freeman, wrote down my questions to him, what his response was. So in regards to are video and audio recordings conducted by a public official on their own personal equipment? Official recordings, are they official recordings and publish new recordings on their own personal YouTube page? He said yes. Is the public official able to edit the recordings, whether it be video or audio? He said yes, example of publishing on the internet, such as I do on YouTube. He said note in the description, a portion of the video has been edited. Does the public official have to save the original portion edited? He said he asked you to foil it. Can a public official refuse the copy of a record due to containing confidential information that was discussed in executive session? He just simply stated that matters discussed in executive session must remain in executive session. And then, how long does the public official need to retain the recordings? He stated that New York State law sets the retention of records for four months.
Okay, now... I talked to the Attorney General's office, and the lady there said that she had a problem with the way we're doing our videos. It was of her opinion that the videos, no matter how they're taken, should not be leaving this building, they should be left with the clerk at the end of the meeting. She, and that's why I asked Rose to put the videos on the agenda, because she said that they are, in essence, a village record, per se. So they shouldn't be leaving, she suggested that we get our own recording device that stays here.
Not a bad idea.
No, not at all. That frees me from having to do, deal with any of it, honestly.
I don't have money in my budget for recording equipment.
So is that something that maybe we should see about... Upon for, through our grant, that we speak with O'Connell and Associates?
Where are you at, Ms. Jean?
The videotaping is definitely a public record, just the same as any of the notes any of you are taking, they're all public records. The public records don't have to remain at the village hall, though, I'm not familiar with any state law that requires it, in fact, I'm nearly certain there isn't such a law. But the Attorney General's office was almost certainly recommending a best practice, that you would want easy access to the public record, and so that the public records officer, that's the clerk, would have access to the record if somebody did foil it, so she could produce it for them easily.
Now, these records have been foiled, right?
The July thirteenth meeting was foiled, yes.
Now, they would have to get it in its entirety, correct?
Yes.
So...
The records retention officer, Rose, would have to request from whomever has the record, the mayor, to provide the record, and she would have to provide it back to the person or people who foiled the record. And that can be on a CD-ROM or a thumb drive if they provide it.
They requested that, in, in the file request, they said it could be uploaded to YouTube, so...
Are we editing it, though? If it's edited, then we're gonna have to get them a copy of the original.
Yes.
And second of all, I guess my main question was, when I said that the allegations that were stated was a two-parted, the allegations that were stated was against the office of the mayor, not an employee. So A, we could talk about them in executive, for one. And B, I would think they would have to be a part of the video, but we shouldn't be editing them anyway.
I don't know, well, I don't know about "we" editing. The allegations, I'm not familiar with them falling into any of the exceptions, or I'm sorry, the reasons why you can talk about them in executive session versus a public meeting, I think you're probably right on that. As for the editing, the mayor is free to edit the video however he wants, so long as he maintains...
Yes, unless, unless it's foiled, is what I'm saying.
Oh, if it's foiled, the entirety has to be given to whomever requested it, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
When he's posting it to a public YouTube account.
You have to give it to whoever it is, because like I said, it doesn't, when I read the email, it says something about confidentiality of employee, and it said, "I wasn't talking about it, unfortunately."
Right, so when he, since he requested, but I haven't finished uploading the video or doing all of it yet, most of it's up?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I haven't checked it yet, I'm, I'm asking. The other thing, too, there's, there's, there's a second part to that, um...
Man. What's my train of thought? It'll come to me in a minute.
Oh, right?
Yeah.
I, I spoke to her for about an hour.
It's actually in my lunchbox. I was gonna, I meant to text it to Dan, but I forgot.
Can you, can you, can you send an email out, I guess, just?
Yeah.
If you could, please, I'd appreciate it.
Name was Susan, something.
Just so that we're all talking the same person, or whoever speaks with who, talking the same person, so... It's not like I spoke with this person here, and I spoke with this person there, and we're getting conflicting information, we're speaking to two different people.
Well, that's what the other thing was, the original video from June thirteenth. Have, have you tried to retrieve that from the cloud?
No.
Because they said that being that that is a public document now, that there could be issues with that, too. I mean, I don't, I don't know what happened, it can't be retrieved, but, like I said...
I don't, I personally don't use the cloud, I don't have everything synced over the cloud, I use it, like, I connect my computer, connect my phone, I connect my iPad, I do every, 'cause I don't, 'cause for the cloud, for how much music and everything that I use personally, it, it, the cloud is pointless, I'd have to buy a ton. I'd have to spend money on the cloud, or I'd be better off getting like a terabyte for my own personal cloud. So I don't even use the cloud for, for that.
The Attorney General said it's most likely probably there, and we might want to look into finding that, and try and recover it, if at all possible, before somebody foils that, and then we can't produce it.
That was already foiled, though, wasn't it?
No, I don't think that one was, I don't think. I don't know.
I'd have to look at my email to be sure, I don't remember.
Which is another reason why having a hard copy of whatever it takes would be, would definitely be a good thing, so that we don't have this problem, you know, with technology or whatever, so that we do have it.
Well, I know, maybe just for right now, we just use a tape deck and chaos like they did before.
Well, I know there is a way that you can...
Do we have one?
We can...
It's broken.
Load it, we can stream it right to YouTube, but it in essence would be streamed live.
If the upload here is good enough for that.
And then, it would, it would save it at the app, it would save it right to YouTube.
I know there is a live option on YouTube, because I've listened to some personally.
I think the, on church does it.
I, I don't know any details about it, other than, hey, look, this is live, you click on the little button in a place.
And that's on the look, I mean, that makes it simpler, then I don't have to upload, because it takes time, because you have to... Shrink the video down to four eighty P, because it can't be done to that, because the time Warner cable takes forever to upload.
Dwayne Perkins, I think, set up all the recording stuff for the church, the Victory Tavern apple. He would be a good one to talk to, to, to tell us what we can do, you know, and how easy it would be.
Can you get that from him?
Absolutely. I could probably have him come to a meeting, and explain it to you. I could probably have him come to the next meeting, I won't be here, but I'm sure he'd come up and, and talk to me about it.
Yeah, come on, actually.
I'll be in South Carolina, Ferguson Island.
That's somebody that we can point to a whole lot of tremendous trouble.
Alright, are there any more discussions in regards to meeting videos, or does that conclude everything?
Well, pretty much so, but the only thing I wanted to add, and I'm concerned with that, 'cause I know in the, in the email I came across, it's kind of an asshole, but, did it clarify my discussion with Nikon about where we sit as far as the chain of command, and the fact that we are all equals?
No, it, it is that we're equals, it's just that, like, what's hap, when I look at like our perception from mainly, okay, mainly like what we've done with the health department, local officials, eh, when it comes to like Nikon, or it comes to OAG, or whatever, it'd be nice if we have a straight funnel, and we're all getting the same information back, that it's not just, okay, I spoke with this person in Buffalo, but this one spoke with someone in Albany, and it's just conflicting information. I just want it to look like, because I feel that when we spoke with, like, when I spoke with Eric Wolers, like, it was, I left a message, and then Jason left a message, and he gives me a call first and says, "Hey, I wanna talk to you first, but I have a board member that's calling up," like, it's like, why am I getting a message from both of you, aren't you guys communicating? And it just looks like that we have a lack of communication, and that we're not, we're not unified when we're reaching out, talking to people.
I agree.
And so, I wasn't saying that it's a chain of command, it's a process, and I could say, I probably used the wrong verbiage there, saying it's a chain of command, like the military, it's just, with military, there's a process. And if we have a process, then we're, A, we, we look unified, we don't look like dorks, essentially, in that we know what we're talking about, and we're laying information, so that that individual isn't repeating themselves multiple times. Now, say, one of us wants to, "Hey, I just wanna confirm what you just told me," or what's going on, so I'm gonna give them a call, cool! You know, so then, hey, I'm just piggybacking off of Dan, or I'm piggybacking off of Jason, or Rick, or whatever, this is what's going on, it's not to look like I am the be-all, hero, that's not it, it's just, our own reputation as a board, in that we're, we have a process, in that we just don't look like a bunch of fools, essentially, in that we're, we're, we're communicating, that's the biggest thing. That's all, so I think the email got, the tone got taken out of control, taken out of context, and that, that's where my process was, and all that, so...
Well, I can promise you that you can call Nikon, I won't, I won't waste my time calling those guys anywhere.
You, you talk to them, one person will get one answer, another, I'll call and get a totally opposite answer.
I called the same person numerous times, and I've been told three different things from that same individual.
Rick and I both talked to John Mancini, what he told you is the exact opposite he told me.
I don't know if we can cut through this or not, because I'm not technologically literate, but we used to be able to do conference calls, can we do conference calls on these things?
Absolutely. There's, when you're in the middle of a call, you'll see six circles on your screen, and one of them's a plus, that's to add somebody else to the call.
Remember, you can only have one other board member, or else it consists of...
Of a meeting.
A couple of meetings, so make sure if you guys wanna do that, that's great, just make sure you incorporate one another.
All I'm saying is, is that we're all sitting there listening to the same, same thing.
Well, exactly.
And, and, and we're asking, we, we know what the question is that's being asked, because if you couch that question a little bit different, you get a little bit of a different answer.
Right.
But I'm just saying, if we could get it so that, you know, I mean, any questions that I ask from John Mancini, or the comptroller, or the AG, or whomever called me back, as such, is that, I have no problem with you guys being on it, I would've felt better, because then there's nothing lost in translation.
Agreed?
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, I mean, I mean, I don't wanna sit here and argue with you, but if I'm accusing you of something, you know, you're not gonna get Matlock, and then be like, you're not gonna plead your case to them, and be the guy saying, "Well, I'm gonna get ahold of them and tell them," you know?
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm, yeah, I mean, I was like, "Why would you contact?" You know, is what I was getting at.
I just think it can be frustrating for those on the other end of the phone, when they, they're, they're saying the same thing.
No, I understand.
To work, and it's Jason, and it's Daniel, and Rick, and, you know, they, they have the...
Yeah, but I don't wanna be a dead horse either here, but like I said, you know, we've been told certain things, and then when we contact these people, they say, "We never said that one, one bit," in fact, with the one guy.
Mark, or whatever you contacted, with the, Mark Stevens? Mark Stevens?
Yeah.
I contacted him, he said, "I did not say that," I said, "I did not say that there was no appearance of improprieties." What I said was, "He should contact the village attorney, and that our office will not give a determination one way or another."
He was kinda distant about it, he phoned you, 'cause he didn't sound happy.
He was, he was kinda... I, I did, I put my contact...
That morning, I actually, the day that Jason and I spoke, was that Friday, or Thursday?
Could be.
I called you back, but I, as soon as I got out of court that morning, which is why I had an answer to the call, he repeated himself four or five times, I, I said, yeah, he, he didn't come off as mad to me, he said, "I'm not saying anything in terms of giving advice, I just said that we don't handle that type of opinion." And so, we don't see an appearance of impropriety, because we don't touch that, or I'm not saying there's an appearance of impropriety, so I think there may be a misunderstanding.
This other thing, too, about Nikon, that I don't, I personally don't like, is that, you know, in this email that you just sent, it says that, something about it's just an appearance, it's not an actual, well, then why does the book say that you should not vote in an appearance of an appropri- appropriity?
Well, that was with, that was with Robert Freeman, that wasn't with Nikon.
Oh, okay.
That was on Committee on Open Government. That's completely different agency.
I'll give you, for instance, with John Mancini of Nikon, Rick talked to him, and he told him he didn't really see a appearance of any improprieties. When I talked to him, a week or so before that, his exact words were to me after I got done explaining stuff to him, he says, "What in the hell is going on in your little village, Mr. Crawford?" I said, "I have no idea, I'd like to know." And he's the one that put me in contact with the Attorney General's office, and the ethics...
Same one, I got.
Ethics.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause he gave it the same thing.
She actually called me, and I said, "I talked to her for about an hour." The other thing is, like, with Marissa, is that how you pronounce her name?
Marissa, yeah.
I called her for a long week when we were talking about the DPW, and, you know, the superintendent signing a contract, and she told me point blank that it would be illegal for us to bind the hands of a future board. The following week, when I called back with another question, and we were talking about that same thing, this same woman, when I, when I, I kinda quoted her back, and she goes, "Well, I wouldn't use the word illegal."
She's a bit inexperienced, my understanding is she's...
Yeah, and that's what I told her, I was like, you know, I just, I don't need to talk to you anymore, because you're the one, you're telling me now you wouldn't use the word, but yet last week, you were the one that used it.
Yeah.
So, you know what I mean, like I said, they're there for our legal guys, I personally think they're wasting our, our money.
Where, when I looked up the, to who to call, and I was looking at different people, what their different goals were, the reason I went with John Mancini rather than her, was he said ethics, which is special, and I figured, well, that's a specialty, that's...
He's been general counsel for Nikon for quite a while now, so he's very serious.
There's another one, too, I can't remember, I spoke to him, too.
Deltrum?
Yes.
Deltrum, they're both very good.
Yeah, he's an ethics duo, I think, right?
He does a number of different things.
Yeah.
Alright, does that conclude everything?
As far as videos?
That's the last thing, and then we can...
I got one other thing, just a little...
Okay, what are the papers?
No. In the emails back and forth with Jean this morning, this afternoon.
Yeah.
He put in there about the, part out of the, I'm assuming this came out of the...
If you're talking about employee, then you have to go into executive.
Well, it's mainly, it doesn't talk about per a person, this is out of the, I'm assuming the, their contract with the union. It says, "Village employees have joined the Teamsters Local Union two sixty-four, the current contract runs from June first, two thousand thirteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, benefits are part of the contract agreement. Per the contract, union employees are allowed to accumulate up to a hundred and thirty days sick leave. The highway supervisor is not a union member, and works under the guidelines of the village's employee handbook." Now... We, a month ago...
Is the key word employee handbook?
Yeah, so this is where I was one of those. I, I think, if this you, the employee handbook doesn't have any, any weight, why is it referenced in the unions?
It, it does for, for the superintendent, because they're not union, for those that are union, that's one thing, like, as far as negotiations, is that. To refer to the employee, to utilize the employee's handbook, cause the way the bargaining agreement states now, it doesn't, it pretty much just says take by the union handbook and. But for the other employees, such as village, the officers, the police department, and for superintendent, if, they fall under the handbook. So in regards to bargaining agreement, can talk.
Do you know what I'm going with us?
The handbook is the currently written accepted practice with regards to how the village treats its employees. It, however, I would indicate has many forms, and should definitely be revised, and the board should look into that, I think we discussed having a, a committee on that. The board discussed having a committee on that, and I would be happy to provide advice to the committee on that.
Well, what I was, cause didn't, what was the questions we brought up about the handbook?
As to whether or not the handbook, it's at the bottom of the hierarchy in terms of interpreting laws and things like that, you've got the constitutions, federal law, state law. Judicial opinions, and then the handbook, which is supposed to be a disillation of any of those for how the village is supposed to treat its employees, and a written recorded policy, so that employees know what to expect. That being said, the village handbook cannot supersede or, or conflict with laws or the constitution. And in some places, it was vaguely written or poorly written, or referred to outdated versions of laws that are no longer in effect in the same way that they were at the time.
Yeah, it's from two thousand four.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's eleven years.
It needs to be updated, but right now, it's all, we have.
If you follow the handbook robotically, you will end up with problems, because the handbook, without being updated is.
Can you add that to, you, could you put it on the work session for August? I know we won't have time to hit it in our regular meeting in August.
But after you're done with the water law, we circulate that one and start discussing proposals individually, not groups of more than two, of course. If you start discussing proposals for things that you wanna see in the handbook or clarifications, that would be fantastic. For example, the policy that you set out for the DPW superintendent, some things in that would be excellent to have in the employee handbook. And the annual evaluations, and the reason why you're doing them, fantastic to have in there. And next year, when you're negotiating with the union for the new CBO. When you do the collective bargaining agreement next year, you're gonna wanna include the computer acceptable use policy, the vehicle policy, and have those be referred to in the collective bargaining agreement. And separately in the handbook for people that are not part of the bargaining unit.
Okay.
Those would make fantastic updates to it.
So can you put that on for the.
August?
The work session?
August work session.
Yes, okay. All right, so do I have a motion to go into executive session then?
To discuss an employee.
Personal matters?
Yeah.
Employee, second?
I'll start it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. unanimous.
Kurt, did you move for that?
Yes.
Oh, and also for a raw.
Jason.
Jason's.
And that's, and that is to include both Jane and Rose in it as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You got that shut off? Okay.